We actually cut them down here. That's all. Those screens falling up, those screens. Hi. Yeah, yeah, no, it's the end, yeah, no. Right on. What's your question? Good one. Cheers.
Should I have that on TV?
Yeah.
Should I have that on TV? You missed it, everyone.
All right, welcome to the selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, July 15th. Mr. Clark, would you do the honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a busy agenda tonight. One item. Preliminary FY 2016 goal-setting exercise. As you all know, apologize for that. We have a preliminary meeting and then we have a public hearing to actually set our goals. So tonight, we're going to hear from the members of the board and see what direction we want to go into for the next 12 months, or actually, next 11 months. And see if we can get some stuff accomplished for the town of Littleton. All right, board members.
I sorted your, the comments that had been received from members into a, into this matrix, which on the left shows what our goals were last year. And then, over the four, five columns on the, on the right indicate any input that we received prior to the meeting. We just got a couple of suggestions from Melissa that I've emailed to each of you. And then, the second column from the left was simply my carrying over last year's goals for next year, if you wanted that to be a starting point.
Sure. So, so board members, I'd look to have us, some discussion here about last year's goals before we kick this thing off. And when we had 10, I would suggest that we review the 10, or actually, nine from last year, have a brief conversation, see what the board's pleasure is with the goal itself, whether we carry it forward, or say we completed it, or say, put it on the back burner for another year. So our first goal was the master plan update steering committee. Or, let me, let me throw one other thing out there. Modify the goal to fit its needs moving forward. So we have, now we have a master plan steering committee online. It's to create the conditions for a successful revision of the town's master plan. Commission a master plan steering committee, build public support for the board of selectmen vision for the town master plan. Coordinating with the planning board includes updating the housing production plan and open space and recreation plan. So that was our goal last year. We have, the updated steering committee is online. And did you fill your last vacancy, Mr. Avella?
We have, a lady has come forward, Betsy Loren, and, Betty, excuse me. And right now, the earliest we can get her appointed is the 20th of August, because that's the next planning board's meeting.
Okay, so.
Very brandy new, minted retiree out of IBM, software engineer, and she stepped forward.
Excellent, excellent. So, that being said, the, the steering committee is now to capacity. That's with members of the planning board, board of selectmen, the general public. Help me out, who else is on there, Paul?
Oh, okay, let's see, I've got to think now. School committee, you have the BOS, the school committee, and what other committees?
Economic development.
Economic development. We've got sustainability committee, representation.
And then the general public.
Yeah.
Perfect. So, that's up and running. Implement housing production plan strategies to remain above 10%. So, the housing plan was adopted by this board, what, three months ago?
It was adopted in January.
January?
Yep.
Time flies very fast.
Or in, in December, and then it was approved by the state in January.
So.
But we do need to, it really needs to stay in our radar screen, because the, the only way we make sure we stay above 10% is by being proactive, and, and so.
I agree, I agree. So, what, what I would suggest is, when we modify this plan, because I think this, personally, I think this should roll into next fiscal years. Objective, stay on the front burner, and to include, you know, we don't have to create it, it's already created, but to have that housing plan, as Mr. Bergman said, let's keep that on the front burner, because, as we all know, we see a bunch of houses being built throughout town. And if, once we go below that 10%, we're vulnerable again for 40B. The open space and recreation plan submitted to the state's division of conservation services the fall of 2000, by the fall of 2015. I know there's, there, there's activity on this. They've been meeting, park and rec, conservation commission.
School department has been involved in that as well. And it will be an important product when it's, when it's done. And I think it will be a venue by which you can actually be looking at the map and be making some judgments about what should go where. You know, because it's, that's, you know, for any piece of property, we might look at acquiring, it's important to know why, you know, what are you, or, or, what are you gonna, what are you gonna put there?
It's also one of the pillars of the master plan.
So that's very important.
That's one of the reasons I, I put down what I did, too. I'd like to have us, have a list of every piece of property that the town owns, conservation trust owns, or anything, where, where it is, map it out. But also, can that land be used for this, this, and this? So we know what we have and what uses actually can be done. Because I still remember back, I don't know, five, six years ago, property on Wilkem Avenue that we approved to be, I can't remember the family's name, to keep it in the same situation as right now, but one of the stipulations is no one can go on it. So, if we acquire land, I want, at least want to have people have the passive recreation opportunities, at least, and not just have it sit there.
Sure, sure. Got some.
No, they'll leave it.
All right. And then we have the green communities application due, submitted to DOR, October 2015. The sustainability committee's been working on that.
Yes, yep.
Along with our input from the board. So, as Mr. Knox said, he had a part of his goal that fit in here. Let's see, who else had anything to do with the master plan?
There's a book on the right-hand side.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Just a chapter.
That's only a chapter.
But as Keith has suggested, keeping some as you've gone down.
Do you want to hit them all first and then come back to them, or do you want to hit one at a time?
I'd say one at a time.
I think one at a time, yeah.
I agree.
Pick one, get it done.
Okay, so the head.
And certainly, master plan, I think, remains one of our goals, and how do we address it? But rather than the master plan update steering committee to develop, because that would be one of their goals, really.
Yep.
Their development. But the goal we could have is a board of selectmen for the master plan update steering committee is resource them, support them, you know, pick a verb. But it's something this board does to help them achieve their goal and objectives.
I think the wording of last year's goal might be all right. I think it still is generic enough. Create the conditions for a successful revision to the town master plan. Commission, well, not commission, a master plan steering committee, and then build public support for a BOS vision of, for town's master plan coordinating planning board. Maybe take that middle one out, commission a master plan committee.
Yeah, we've done that.
Any other comments on that?
I have some comments just relative to the, to build public support for the board of selectmen's vision for the town's master plan. It's the town's master plan, right? So we're, we're kind of the stewards of it.
For the town's master plan.
So, so is it in fact our vision? Is it the town's vision? Is it the, is it the, the steering committee's?
I think that was meant to, to kind of say to the steering committee, what is the RFP going to look like?
Okay.
To build that. So I think you're right, now that the steering committee's built and is working actively on the RFP.
Creating one.
Creating it, we gave them a charge. I think that we could probably strike something or replace it with something.
Yeah, build.
Let's call it the town, town's master.
Town's master plan, yeah.
Build, build public support for the town's vision for the town's master plan.
Yeah.
Or the residents' vision.
I'm, I'm good.
Something like that, instead of the board of selectmen's vision.
Sure.
Yeah.
You're right, because I mean, every single meeting in every venue has spoken, it's not the BOS, it's not the planning boards, it's not the steering committee, it's the towns. So your point is absolutely valid.
What do you stars with you?
You can have a gold star, Mr.
So why don't we just, why don't we just say, build public support? Because that's our duty, is to, to build the public support, right? Make sure it gets out there. Build public support for the town's master plan.
Done.
That works.
Okay. Anything else?
But continuing to coordinate with the planning board, I think, is good, since it's truly theirs.
Yeah, I would strike that, leave that there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree. And, and all of them, I mean, the, the housing production plan, I think we should keep it in, just because of the fact that, you know, once we slip under that 10%, that's always going to be on our radar, whether it's the master plan is completed or whatever. We should always have that in our goals to keep that.
But the housing production plan has been updated and approved.
Yes.
And where Keith has over here, implement the plan so that we can stay above 10%, I agree with that piece. Open space and rec plan does need to be updated, that's in that process.
Okay.
So I think that's a valid goal.
Yep.
But I would say, instead of updating the housing production plan, just as Keith put it, implement it.
Yeah, implement it, yeah. I've got just a, a working, I'm, I'm, this is what I'm working on, is an update from tonight's meeting, and can edit as, as we go. But this is the language, I don't know, is that too small to read?
If you go full screen, well, then you can't type, can you? Can you make it bigger on that? Actually, I can read that, so it's no big deal.
Figure out how to, must be some way to make it larger.
All right, so, so what are you doing, you're typing as we're talking? Is that what this is, Keith?
Yeah, that, what I did was, I took, as a template, I took last year's goals. And I'm editing that. Assuming that you want to keep all those goals, if you don't want one, I can take it out.
Gotcha.
Just, just as I'm editing here, I took last year's goals as a starting point for, for preparing a list of your goals for this year, so.
So, under the proposed goals for 2016, Keith, you had put in that column, the green communities application.
Yeah.
I think that, I think it's pretty easy just to slide that right in at the end, the end of that.
That'd be great.
So essentially, keep the same goal, we're just going to.
Edit it.
Edit it.
I like the fact that you put some time certainties on there.
Well, yes, I saw, I read your comments, and I had some due dates, so.
Thank you. Well measured.
All right, any other?
Yeah, I just, I want to ask Chuck, I'm intrigued by one of your last statements, establish a plan for acceptable growth, ideal growth rate, number of single-family homes built in a year. Is that, is that something we can even do?
I don't know if it's something we can regulate, but I think it's something that we should be tracking and be aware of, and, and kind of have a feeling for where we're at.
I agree, I was intrigued by the idea, is it possible we can limit it? But I don't think.
I would love to be able to limit it, but I'm not sure legally if we are able to. I mean, if, if someone has the land, the frontage, if they meet, if they meet all the, the requirements.
Well, I mean, there are some communities that in their past have adopted building permit caps, and I've worked for two of them, Nantucket and Providence Town, which have had them. And it was a long time, in one case, it was 30 years ago, in the other case, it was like 20 years ago. But there, and they were only allowed as temporary measures, that, to cope with, typically, to allow a town to embark on a planning process, the results of which would be zoning amendments or something like that. But I haven't, I'm not aware of the community that's gotten away with a building permit moratorium.
Did you guys correlate house prices after that?
Through the roof. Well, and, and there was, and worse, there was a mad rush to submit subdivision plans before the zone, before the, before the moratorium took effect, because it was in a zoning amendment. And Nantucket in particular was a disaster, that, that they probably had, you know, five or 10 years' worth of subdivision plans just come in the door. Just to, just to freeze them from.
So, so the point being is just, let's keep it on the radar. I mean, that's something the building commissioner does track, I mean, the town does track everything that, any permits going off the board.
And what I was going to offer, you know, the efficacy of ideal growth, you know, put aside for the moment. The master plan is addressing this in the aggregate, as does the housing production plan. I think we've all pretty much got a head nod north-south, as we're not going to say six of those, five of these. It seems pretty difficult to do. You know, the zoning that we have in town now effectively rations land. We know better than all of us, that land is a very rationed product, you know, there's only so much of it. And then if we only cut it up in certain sizes, the bigger that size at this cut, the fewer folks can buy in. So that's a rationing, and that's going to cause prices. And now we have to find, where do we want that curve to match the curve of affordable? And I don't mean, when I say affordable, the legal definition of an affordable property and 10% thing, but where folks can come in and afford to live in the community, or afford to remain in the community.
This kind of came, this kind of came up as, I've heard a lot from a lot of folks in town, driving around, you have the Sanderson property being developed, you've got some turkey farms, I've gotten some phone calls on that, the fields were here the other night. Mike Zeldin actually stood up and said something about the cluster zoning, and, you know, there's, there's, there are means through which people are, obviously 40B, if, if we can maintain our, our, our number of the 40Bs, we're not worried about that. But, just, just so that we know what all the factors are, to try to limit development. I just, I just don't want to become overwhelmed, you know. There was a lot of comments made the other night about keeping Littleton, you know.
Tough to do when you own your own property, you know.
Absolutely.
But there, just, just another example on reaching back now to what experiences elsewhere, that even long after, in Providence Town, even long after the building permit, building permit moratorium expired, we still, we still, there was still the requirement annually for a growth management hearing or report that the various boards would submit to the selectmen, and we methodically went through every year. How many building permits were issued, what the impact was, what the, you know, increase in title V design flow was townwide, which we had the sewer system look at it, what the, what the water consumption was, a lot of different indicators.
Right.
Of, of growth. And then, take a step back and say, once a year, what do we do about this? Does this point to any policy changes? But you, but you actually sat down and went through that. Might be an interesting exercise to do annually with the planning board.
I was going to say, you know, that, that kind of fits better as a standalone goal.
Right.
To develop something like that, to have the planning board involved, to have the school department involved, and get the impact of everything that went on that previous year, so.
I like that.
So let's put that on the side as a goal. Let's get through these nine as a potential goal.
All right, thanks.
All right, so, you know, the reading up on the, the TV is tough for me, my friend. On a black and white is a little bit better for me, so if we could just get through this and maybe send it out, and we can have comments.
Yes, that will be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Prescription, maybe?
It's more understanding. All right, so our second goal, economic development policy. Foster economic development that contributes to the town's fiscal resources while simultaneously retaining Littleton's.
Buchalick.
Buchalick.
Whose word was that?
I don't know.
I think that was, must have been PJ's.
I think so.
He's got yours.
Why, I never use that word.
Empower the, and resource, and resource, the econo, see, and resource, it tells me it was PJ. The economic development committee to explore, seek out opportunities in support of goal, of, of the goal. Includes Littleton Common, Point, the Point, Crossroads, Foster Street, Porter Road, Taylor Street, Depot, Air Road. Ensure that the EDC coordinates closely with the master plan steering committee. That's a tough one. I mean, we've had the, one report back from the EDC, the economic development committee. They seem to be doing some good work. We haven't heard from them recently, it was probably, what, three months ago we heard them, from that, from that committee. I think that we, maybe bring it, bring it back next year? Give them a year to, to get some, some, some advantage, or get some processes in place, get their, their feet firmly planted, and, and maybe develop another goal for next year, my opinion.
Yeah, I know, I know that the, I was, I wasn't at the, the last master plan update steering committee, but I was reading some emails about interest in the, the economic development tool.
Yes, from Northeastern.
That was doing, I didn't know if that, if that.
We're having, we're going to have.
Was part of a larger discussion about economic development.
Yeah, we're having the, at the next meeting on the 28th of July, folks from the Dukakis Center for Urban Studies, Urban Development at Northeastern to come speak to us. And one of the homework assignments for us is to go to their website. So that was some of the discussion on that, Mike Zeldin had been doing some background research on it. So that's what that's about. I would offer that economic development never not be a goal of the board of selectmen. It has to remain on there, in that we do, and we've empowered the EDC, so we could say we've done that. But continuing to resource them, I think, is a good goal for us. As we get further down, we say, ensure the EDC, I don't know that we got any kind of statutory clout to say another committee's going to do something.
So, I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking of, we need objectives to, in the next 11 months, that we can accomplish. And I agree, you know, we need, maybe we, we have to break these up into long-term goals, so that they're always on our radar screen, carry forward. And let's make a decision as we get through this, to say, okay, there are going to be nine or 10 long-term goals that will update annually. And then there's going to be four, or maybe five, short-term goals that we think the towns can, that can be accomplished for the town in the next 11 to 12 months. Because you're right, I mean, some of these are fantastic, you know.
I think what you've described, because some of these overriding ones, if you will.
Yeah.
There are subsets to it.
Sure.
And the one I offered, I believe, is a subset, before getting to it. As far as economic development and actually engaging with other agencies, the very fine, Sunny Delight, excuse me, Sunny Delight closing doors, well, that in itself is bad for us, and we're working. The thing is, it's at least offers us an opportunity to go knock on some doors that perhaps we may not have previously.
Sure.
Keith's certainly involved with Secretary Ash, Secretary Pollock, some others, and we've been conversing with some other people that are on economic development in the state government, and working, Mass Econ is an example. Folks there are engaged, helping us out, a guy named Chris Steele, Doug, I forgot Doug's last name, if you remember. I apologize, Doug. But anyway, so some folks there at the state level, you know, giving us Elbety and John Golnick, and a couple others. So, those are subsets, and some of the things we're trying to do with them, I think, that Keith is engaging with, some of the folks, you've had in contact with some people.
Right.
Because it's, I mean, at some level, the economic development goal is. Cause it's, I mean, at some level, the economic development goal is, is hardly just a goal for the, for the Economic Development Committee. And it's, and it's a goal for the whole organization. I know, you know, when I was hired, uh, seven and a half years ago, I was told the top, my top attention is to be economic development. And that hasn't changed for time. I have to say, day in, day out, what, you know, what's the top thing that I'm looking at? And it's economic development, whether that's in the form of transportation, which I explained to Secretary Pollock, is Littleton's, to, to Littleton, transportation is our number one economic development strategy, or a, or a number one.
Cause it's a great facilitator.
But there's a lot of, you know, economic development consistent with community character is the, you know, it's the focus of, if we want it for all that we wanna be able to do, uh, we need to, you know, thoughtful, uh, as the, and as the ADC told us, thoughtful revenue, net revenue producing business in, in the areas of town that are zoned for business is sort of what we need to focus on to accomplish all we hope to accomplish as a town.
If I could use potpourri as an example, the consensus of this board is that they coming to town was a good idea. But how did they happen to come to Littleton? We go seeking them?
They, they found us.
They found us.
Because we were on the radar screen of state programs that we have been long associated with.
Which is a good thing, but I think the point I'm really going after here is that was a push. They had a push out and reach in, look, and they happened to find us. Good. But what are we doing? And that gets to my goal here that I'd like to interject, develop a town marketing plan, is how do we go after the potpourries? Those organizations, businesses, whatever, that we think we'd like to come to our town, because they support, what Keith was just talking about, the character of the town, what are we doing to go out and get them? Whether they're in Seattle, Washington, Phoenix, Arizona, you know, and not just across the street. And it's not a case of, I wanna go raiding other cities and states. It's, you know, how do we offer people the opportunity, say, you can expand here, you can, you know, whatever it might be. And that's what we're not doing at this point.
Yeah, sometimes you pitch, sometimes you catch. I mean, with, with the, with the potpourri, that was a catch. Phoebe Technologies, that was a catch because there, there were businesses that were looking to expand. They couldn't do it wherever they were, and they found us because we are on the ra- because Littleton is on the radar.
And let's face it, the point was a pitch because of the overlay district that we did.
Yes, and Sam Fark was the catcher.
Right.
Right. In that case, it was us saying to the outside world, this is, this is what we want done here. If this is you, come, come talk to us.
May I ask this? Did we actually go knocking on Sam Fark's door and say, we in Littleton would like to invite you?
We didn't know, knock on Sam's door.
We did not, we did not. But.
And that's not a critique, because you're absolutely right, what you guys deal with the overlay and stuff. Set the conditions.
Right. But through, I think, dealing with.
All the state agencies.
Getting the buzz, all the state agencies, getting the buzz. And that's, that's, that was the, the, the driving force to be able to say, look at, you know, we wanna, we wanna be part of the four ninety-five Beltway tech, what do they call it, tech?
Uh, corridor, yeah.
Corridor, the four ninety-five tech corridor. We wanna be part of it.
The Think Belt is what Sam calls it.
The Think Belt, yeah. So we wanna be part of that, and we just, we just kept spinning and spinning and spinning to be heard. So, and I think that's, that was instrumental and.
And I would like to very much say we're doing the research, and Company A, St. Louis, Missouri, is looking to expand their business.
Yeah.
Boom, we're knocking on their door.
That's a, that's a great thing to do. I just don't think we have the, uh, financial or the staff resources to be able to do it. Get a plan out there. If we can put in, develop a website or a subset, you know, you know.
I think, I think we actually started this long time ago, not to go after the thing, but when we used to meet with Secretary Bellicky, how many times did we meet?
Yeah.
But we were putting it out right then that we are interested. We let the state know. We, you contacted her how many times? So without actually going after companies, we were putting it out there that certain parts of our town, we're all set for you. We're doing this, we're doing that.
Allow me to put you on the spot, if I may. You have a sign in front of your business.
Yep.
Advertising, that you're open for business, or do you knocking on doors and contacting people and networking?
Well, obviously, in the type of business I'm in, you're doing all of that.
Cause you're, you're marketing a product.
Right.
Trying to sell. And I think we're a town, we're a product, and we'd like to market ourselves to those organizations that we'd like to come to support the character of the stuff.
Yeah.
So we've got a sign up, that's good. That's a good step, but I wanna see us knocking on doors.
So, but goodness.
Just, I'm sorry, I totally agree with that. I just thought I saw that on the Economic Development Committee's list of things they wanted to do. Do we know if that, I read something about what they're.
Well, I mean, part, part of it too is, is that it's, um, we have a part-time, unpaid, unstaffed comi- uh, Economic Development Committee. And if, in, in order to carry out this vision, which I think is a great idea, it's what, it's what, you know, communities that, it's what Framingham's doing, it's what communities that are on the move are, are doing. But if you need to, you may, you have to identify what is the capacity, whether that's in-house or contracted out, to be able to do that. We don't have to solve that tonight, but I think it's important to identify what you hope to achieve. And then to, you know, we talked about empowering and, and, and resourcing the EDC. I, what, I mean, and, and I think the EDC is an important player in that, but I would suggest that maybe it's, it's the Board of Selectmen and, and the administration that, that you might wanna have be the focus for that activity. Certainly supported by the recommendations that are coming in from EDC. That is so important, the, the work, the grassroots work that they're doing. But we can't expect that a part-time, unstaffed committee with no resources is gonna be taking it to the next level.
I agree.
So, so I guess, all right, so let's, let's get back to this specific goal here.
By the way, knock on doors metaphorically too, it's not.
No, I get it. Really? So, so.
And, and, and just, just to say that the knock, the knock on doors business or the me, or the outreach and, or being, and, or even being receptive to business. I, I gotta say, I hear all the time from, from, uh, from businesses or prospective businesses that, that are looking for land and, and Littleton are looking to do something, that if it's an idea that sounds good, we give them instant feed, we, Maron, myself, the, you know, the regulatory staff, will give them instant feedback. Oh, oh, that's something that we know the town wants to do. Go on and talk to the planning board, get, get some feedback. And that, that we do get told that how, uh, that that doesn't happen everywhere. That there are a lot of, that there are plenty of communities that say, no, we're just, you know, we're just the impartial, uh, arbiter of whatever decision comes, and we're not gonna be proactive, and we're not gonna put ourselves out there. But Littleton does have the reputation for, for being, um, for being proactive. And if someone's gonna come in, that we will, you know, drop what we're doing and, and work with them. So.
Kind of like casinos.
But there's more, but there's more.
But I think that's, that's important. There's a couple of different comments I was gonna make. One of them is Joe mentioned having, um, a list of, on the master plan, having the list of the properties and identify what the needs are, what the potential uses are of those properties. I think we need to do the same thing here. You know, we've listed a bunch of areas or, or streets. There's some properties and I've, I've actually reached out to Bob Coughlin from the Mass Biotech Council. He's the executive director of Fenner's job. And he's, he and I are trying to coordinate something just between vacations and all that kinda stuff. It's probably not gonna happen till the end of the summer, but, um, just to have him come out here, have a cup of coffee and go look at Gutierrez's property. Cause it's three hundred thousand square feet, there could be R and Ds, and we could have, we could have a campus for one of the biotech companies. We're at the crossroads of Route, I mean, we got Worcester, Cambridge, Framingham, Andover, I mean, you know, Pfizer, all these. It, it, I think where we are and what the potential of, with the MBTA station and shuttling people back and forth, you know, I've, I've seen what they've done in Framingham, I've seen what they've done in, just outside of Worcester. You know, so there's, there's, uh, to be proactive, like we, and to identify the types of uses that we, we would be receptive to. I mean, those are, those are great jobs. We've got a lot of people that live in our community that go into Cambridge or up to Andover or Pfizer. So, you know, I think if we can kind of piece that out and identify what inventory we do have and determine what uses we would like to see there. I mean, specifically with the, with the Sunny V property. We're actively soliciting a, a juice company, a brewer, a distiller. I, I actually, on the, on the ride home tonight, I was talking to a guy from Mass Brewers Association. And they, I mentioned to you guys that they sent an email out to their entire membership, and this guy got the email and said, hey, I wanna talk to you about that. It sounds like it's too much space for us, but I'd, I'd love to learn more about it. Cause you don't know who he knows. Maybe he knows a brewer that's in Rhode Island that's looking to expand, you know, so.
Subdividing the building.
Yeah, I mean, he, he even mentioned, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for me to do something with a buddy of mine that does cold storage.
That's example of what I was driving at.
Yeah.
So, back to the goal itself, and do we wanna modify this goal? Do you wanna, you know, include the developer marketing plan into this goal, or do we keep it as written?
Definitely include the marketing plan, I like that.
Or do we, again, this is the long-term goal, should that be the short-term goal? You know, and what do, what do folks think about the long-term, short-term type situation for their goals?
I'd agree.
You're absolutely right. I mean, we're not gonna set a hundred-year goal.
No.
That many years we want. But for example, we've, the Master Plan Update Steering Committee, we've set up basically a fifteen-year goal.
Sure.
What's, what do we'd like the town to look like in twenty thirty, and how we'd like to do, to get there? So I don't know if we're looking at something fifteen years for some of these.
No.
But some of these are enduring.
But to complete the master plan, you know, it's gonna take another year or so, possibly two. We keep that on the front, front.
And it's always evolving.
And it's al- always evolving. As we sit down and do this next year, we, we figure out what's been completed and what, what needs to be added, what needs to be deleted. So, okay, so it sounds like the board wants to go that way, um, yet you agree, Mr. Knox?
No, I, I think, once again, this is some, we have to keep.
Right.
It's Keith's point, it's always gonna be on there. Economic development will always be part of what we do.
And, and to add, develop a town marketing plan, that's something that we wanna do for this year.
Right. So, so I guess what my question is about the adding the, the, the marketing plan, is that something that, you know, we keep economic, economic development on here as a long-term goal? But have a separate, so we don't, that doesn't get lost in the goal itself. The marketing plan, have it as our short-term.
That's fine.
One year.
Yeah, and I think you can even segregate that right under number two. You have, you know, number one, A under number two is foster economic development, yada, yada.
As a short-term goal.
That's A. And B is develop a, a marketing plan. B is the short-term goal.
Okay.
Develop a marketing plan by December fifteenth.
Okay.
And it has to be three pages long.
So you said the first one was?
So the first one is as it sits, I guess. And then B would be develop a marketing plan that supports the economic development policy.
To.
Which is a short-term, where the time's certain.
Yeah. And, you know, what are we gonna say? May? You don't wanna say December, give it a couple more months, but here we are in August, six months. August, September, October, November, December, January.
February.
February.
Give it six months?
Yeah.
At the very least, yeah.
Oh, at least.
Because I'm thinking.
I, I would think May, next year would be.
All right. Yeah, let's say April because the, that'll be when this board, when the current board has its last meeting.
Okay, April it is.
Yeah. That's great.
All right, moving on. Transportation Community Rail, number three. Plan for shuttle service improvements when Fitchburg Line is upgraded, completed by January twenty sixteen. Crosstown Connect Transportation Management Association Shuttle Transportation Services. So this is our, as, as we, we've seen, you know, it's still a long-term goal as far as that being implemented in January sixteen. Oh, not, not really that long term, right? Four months, five months. Keep that on, and we've been working with the Crosstown Connect.
Yeah, in fact.
More exposure.
Yeah, in fact, I had met, when I put stuff in the mail packet on Monday night, it completely slipped my mind to, to put the update, uh, then of the meeting that I participated in with Secretary Pollock on, since our, since our last meeting, where she committed to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of funding in the next three years for Crosstown Connect. And, and that's great. We were, the new Transportation Management Association's got funding, which is, which is great. That was one of the four bullets that we asked for in the community compact that we, for Crosstown Connect that, that we, we've submitted now to the, to the Baker-Polito Administration, a, an application form. And I just wanna, I should have thought to pull up what our.
So, so.
Yeah, we had, the, among the specific goals that we were looking for is the one that's in here about expanding the, um, the schedule on the Fitchburg Line and shuttle service. The other thing, which I think is, uh, is sustainable funding for, for Transportation Management Association. And the other one was that we are working, uh, we are looking to overcome some of the bureaucratic hurdles of dealing with two regional transit authorities and, and Mass DOT. And that's not, that's not a small order. But I happen to think that it's something that the Baker Administration in particular would be interested in helping us solve. So.
So, so as far as this goal goes, I mean, the, the schedule. We're, we're planning for the shuttle improvements for Fitchburg, the, the, the line. The service has been upgraded at this point. The rail is not going two ways yet until January.
Well, the capital improvements are all but complete, but once they are, once they are finally complete, all up and down the Fitchburg Line, the secretary has, Secretary Pollock has told us that she is, that she recognizes that, that Littleton needs to get a better schedule. And we're talking about maybe the four seven thirty. So I think it would be important for us to be advocating for, and working with the state administration and, and all the other partners to ensure that we get better service and that we link our shuttles or whatever we're gonna come up with, whether it's fixed route or, or whatever else, to link those transportation hubs where, where people work. So that's sort of.
Who in town would be most used for that, the reverse commute? IBM?
Yeah, I, yeah, it's been on their list, sure, yeah.
And it will certainly be part of the marketing plan.
Yeah. And they're, and they're part, and, and, yeah, indeed, it's, it's almost more important in what they tell their prospective employees than, than, um, than actually providing the service, that it's the idea that it's, that it's there. But, but it's an important component for businesses that are, that are located and expanding in our region to be able to say to prospective applicant, applicant pools living in Boston or Cambridge that they can, you know, theoretically come out here.
But certainly the largest employer in the town.
Yes, yeah.
Do we have a handle on the geographic dispersion, please?
We do not, but Crosstown Connect does because, because the Transaction Associates, who's our consultant there, works with IBM specifically and with a number of other businesses in the area on, on tailoring employee programs as part of their membership.
A simple goal I'm gonna offer here then is gather, collect, what word do you wanna use? The information on things like that and get it disseminated to us, so each of us can be talking parrots any place and every place we are. You know, building, or Company A has three thousand employees in our town, fifty percent of them come from Cambridge or further east and would rely, would aptly rely on the train, you know. But they have to be at work by eight o'clock, and the current schedule doesn't support it, just as one example. So if we've got some of that data, pardon me, available to us, that Crosstown Connect has available, I think it'd be very useful for us. And then that way, we, we can talk authoritatively when we speak to other people.
Once again, part of the marketing thing, you're talking about too, is that some of that data we don't have, but there are, might be companies looking at Gutierrez's land and saying, well, if, if that is available, we can get our employees out here earlier. So it's all part of a marketing thing too. Some of those empty buildings on Foster Street might benefit. You may, you may have some small companies that, okay, we'll locate here, cause that train's coming out here by seven fifteen or something.
So I guess to, to focus back on the goal itself, you're right, get some data out to us, but is it really a goal?
Certainly an objective to serve the goal.
Yeah, so I mean, let's, let's take a look at the goal itself.
I mean, yeah, what is our goal? Is our goal to improve service, improve schedules?
Get, get people from point A to point B in using, once we have a better service from the rail. You know, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to, is to, is to better link where people live with where they work.
Right.
Although it's not quantified.
Well, even beyond that, recreationally, there's, there's people that use the services to get into the city on the weekends, or to get to a ballgame.
Yeah, and, and on, and on that, and it, and this was the other thing that was on the list of asks of the secretary, would like, expanded parking at the Littleton, MBTA commuter rail station.
It's already, it's already. So, all right, let's get back to the goal itself. Do we think it's a carryforward? It's, it's moving, we're working on it right now, it's a fluid goal.
It's, it's in progress.
It's in progress, essentially.
I just want to make one comment. So I had only two pieces of feedback, and one of them applied to everything, and the other one was a potential new goal. So, but I bring it up just because of this discussion, and Chuck, I see your comment, too. So just overall, I spent a lot of time going through all of Keith's really great updates, for each goal, what has happened, for each one with a timeline and all the progress made, and for each one, I tried to figure out, are we on track, off track, complete, and what phase are we in? Are we defining it? Are we in implementation? Are we now in measurement mode? Where are we? And, you know, after I spent a while, I could kind of get a pulse, but it was a little bit difficult, so I think somehow if we could get a little bit better, I, I don't, I don't know the answer, I just know that I felt like I didn't have a pulse on all of these, just because there's so many moving parts. So, how could we?
And that gets back to this whole process last year. We were overwhelmed, you know, with goals, so this in itself was a goal to kind of get our goals manageable, and now it's even to take it one step further to quantify, quantify what's going on and where we're at.
So maybe we like check in on the goals in like six months or something like that, and do a, do a pulse, and go, where are we with, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but maybe I can plant that seed and we can.
I actually had that feedback, so I solicited some input from others, and I got that feedback. You know, it'd be nice to know where, where the board of selectmen, where the town is at with goals throughout the year.
Report out, yeah.
That's, that's kind of was the impetus of me saying, do something on LCTV or.
Twice a year, something, something.
I don't know, something.
Yeah, or even the end of the year, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but I like that. Let us get a pulse and communicate out somehow.
I mean, a lot was mentioned the other night with the school committee candidates about communication, and I think that, I think the school committee does a good job of communicating what's going on, and especially positive stuff that's going on. And I think that we need to kind of take a little bit of that action as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, promote what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is, we don't just come here several times a year and sit down and get on TV, and we're actually doing stuff, and this is what we're doing.
Or all week.
Yeah, all week.
We can actually talk about, yep, but it's being mentioned right now, one of the further goals further down.
The communication?
Communications and town government and things like that.
Yeah.
All right, so back to this goal.
I think that, sorry, sorry, communication rolls through every single one of them, that's why I wasn't sure if it was a specific goal, just to kind of set up how we communicate, to put it as a goal now because it's early on.
Overlapping with the goal I want to add.
Or is, yeah.
Yep, on the same page.
Okay, so.
So could we maybe do a little brainstorming later, not tonight, but like schedule twenty-minute brainstorming on how we might do that measure and communicate?
Yeah, I mean, we can set it as, as an objective tonight, and then to get, to, to, to bring it forward, you know, let's say, communication, how are we going to communicate our goals to the public?
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Simple goal, and then we agenda it, and let's talk how we're going to do that, try to get that accomplished.
Thank you, perfect.
Back to this goal. Do you want to leave it as is? Are we, you know, do we?
I'd leave it as is, because it's, it's in progress.
But do we need it in? Do we need, my question is, do we need it in, and, and if so, does it belong in long-term, short-term, and where are we going to go?
I think there are some short-term goals to, that it, in particular, because we've submitted a community compact application. And it, and it's probably worth noting that, in the goal, that we've, that we've submitted a community compact application to, to the Baker-Polito administration, support, support Cross-Town Connect, community compact application efforts, community compact efforts, support Cross-Town Connect Transportation Management.
All right, so, so leave it as is. We'll make it a long-term goal, because I don't see this being fixed in a year, you know, we'll.
As long as, as long as the commuter rail goes through town, there's going to be some, things are going to be changing, Gutierrez gets built, and there's always going to be stuff.
There is, there is, Chuck, but we're going to figure out that, you know what, we've, we've put the infrastructure in place to make things happen.
Yeah.
As a goal. Now, to, you know, to monitor and, and to, to modify those services, is it shouldn't be a goal, it should be an everyday thing.
Just while we're on it, I'm just going to throw this out there just because it's a top-of-mind thing. And it says commuter, commuter rail right there, and Keith just mentioned that, looking for more parking. With Turkey being, going through, you know, redevelopment and whatnot, is there any opportunity, and not, not that I'm looking to buy land, but is there any opportunity for the town to buy a piece of that property that's closest to the train station, and put up a town-owned lot?
We, we can, yeah, we can explore that, although I will say, and I don't, you know, I'm not sure how much of this was public or not, and I don't know what the status of the application is, but at an earlier point this, this winter or spring, that the application that was then in front of the planning board included a component where there would be space for about eighty parking spaces that could be made available, as.
The developer was proposing that?
The developer was proposing that. I alerted the MBTA to it at the time, I found out in February about it, and they were, they were very enthusiastic about that.
I think Chuck, Chuck's looking for a revenue source, so that the town gets it.
I like that idea.
We offer the convenience, but then the collateral benefit is the town gets the revenue, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Now, here's the thing, the last mile, what does it really mean to us? I don't mean, you know, fifty-two-hundred-eighty square miles, that's a few feet, but what's, what's the last mile mean?
The concept means getting from the transportation hub to your final destination, so getting from, so for example, getting from the commuter rail station to IBM.
Which commuter rail station?
Littleton.
Why Littleton?
Where it could be South Acton. I mean, the goal, the, the goals are the transportation hubs, so.
That's it, but we focus on the Littleton four ninety-five train station, and I think a lot of our thinking, how do we solve that problem? The problem isn't how do we get people from the four ninety-five Littleton train station, is how do we get people back and forth to that hub, A hub?
A hub, it could be, it could be Alewife. In fact, some of the things that the, it would be a menu, the, the, the Cross-Town Connect approach is whatever connects where people live to where they work, and by whatever means, because it's not, it's not a silver bullet, it's not one, it's not one train station. It's rather the system, it's the network of whether it's shut, you know, shuttles that, it might be a shuttle, a shared shuttle that goes from Alewife, that goes to multiple businesses here, might be, it might be fixed route shuttles that loop.
For a lot of people in Littleton, the West Conquer train station is the most convenient, not South Acton, and not Littleton. Because if you go, depends on which direction you go in.
Well, it depends on if you're heading, which direction you're heading, yeah, yeah.
If you're headed into Boston, the West Conquer one's a more convenient one. So all I'm saying is not, you know, to, I'm talking West Conquer over Littleton, is I think we've narrowed down, and we, we look at all our solutions based on the Littleton train station, and I don't think that's the important thing to us, it's getting folks back and forth.
It's, it's part of the solution, and that's why the.
It's part of it, and indeed, the, the Littleton station is part of the solu, is part of the solution for other communities. I mean, it's, could be part of Westford's solution, and we're working with them. Could be part of Devon's solution, and we're working with them, and it's all, and I agree.
It is part of that.
And, and that, that's why our, that, that we're, we're not attempting to solve this on a Littleton-only basis. It only gets solved on a, on a broader, you know, multiple community basis, working with at least two regional transit authorities and a lot of other agencies.
This goal is specific to Littleton, because once, you know, each individual hub is going to need their own transportation piece also. You know, so that, that last mile, as, as Keith put it, you know, each, each hub is going to not only need the global piece, but it's going to need its individual piece also. So how do we, how do we fix that, and that's what I think this goal is about.
So to answer my question about, I'm pretty certain that West Acton wouldn't be happy about us putting a lot up and collecting revenue from West Acton, but.
This, this, everybody's so jammed in this corridor right now, you're not going to hear a peep out of anybody, because there's overflow everywhere.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying that, with PJ saying, you know, West Acton might be the place to go, I'm pretty sure we can't build a lot in West Acton and get the revenue.
But Keith, do you remember what the MBTA said it costs per parking spot to build?
I don't, offhand.
It was a big number.
I don't, it, it's a, it's a big number. I mean, and the reason why, for example, I have to say, back maybe three or four years ago, when we were, when we were looking to help the MBTA add parking to this station that they were going to, they're going to refurbish a, a station, build a brand-new station, and at the time weren't going to have any public parking, and we said, that's nuts, that you gotta, you gotta have public parking, not a private parking lot that's leased, you need public parking. So we strongly advocated with, with our legislative delegation, and with the state, and ultimately got Secretary Byelucky to give two million dollars to the MBTA, so that they could construct and, and provide two, two hundred spaces. Yet, and frankly, that, I, I haven't given up hope on that as a source for the, for the future. And even though that would mean that there's no Littleton resident spaces, the, 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 what it, what it does reflect is that the MBTA is looking, they're looking to undertake capital projects. That, that one of their, one of the secretaries, one of the issues that she's diagnosed is, MBTA hasn't done a very good job in spending the money that it's, that it's had appropriated for capital projects. And so they're, one of their job ones is to make sure their capital money gets spent. Well, then I make sure that she knows that we need another two hundred spaces, and that, and that, and I, I prefer, my personal preference would be that if the state can find the money and do it, great. We've got a lot of projects that, you know, I don't know, town meeting is going to feel about us borrowing money to, on a, on a speculative business venture that maybe we'll make enough at four dollars a day to make back what the cost of the land is.
All right, so, so, so let's just reel this back in, because we're, we're really reaching out.
I came up with, and I don't know if this, let me try to, I'll put it at two hundred here, maybe it'll be big enough, but.
Put the cursor aside, the margin, it doesn't.
Pardon?
Not all the way to the margin of the screen, but the margin of the window, of the window that you have open. The Word document, that window, aside.
Can you spread out, can you widen the?
No, it's not a Word document, it's the.
Okay.
It's the, it's the web.
I didn't mind, okay.
So, so essentially adding the, the administration to address first, first mile, last mile reserve, commute reverse, commute expand back to Littleton MBTA commuter rail station. I know there was a lot of discussion right there as far as where we were going with this, but, you know, we want to keep it on the existing goals, and.
It's productive, though. It's a good conversation.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying it was a bad thing. We'll keep it as, as that. Any issues?
Nope.
All right. Number four, the roadway, roadway improvement plan update. Review ten-year roadway improvement plan. Develop a streets application for Mass DOT for certified funding, certification funding. Complete streets app.
Yeah, the only one new, well, what we haven't done is, we, we've, we've done a couple of things. We've adopted a local policy. We've had town meeting vote to accept the statute that will allow us to participate in this, in the state's competitive funding program for complete streets, but the state hasn't yet issued its RFP, which I'm told it will do by the fall. And when they do, we will want to apply for funding, for competitive funding, complete streets. So, since that's an activity that we need to undertake, I wanted to make sure it was on our radar.
Sure. And, and then you had some comments, I had a review and update, and Chuck, you had, is there a means for public input and suggestions for the proposed improvements? What we usually do with this is during the, the budgetary process, we will figure out what's going on, and Jim will come in and give us an update. Kind of tell us where the good, the bad, and the ugly is, and kind of prioritize. At that time, we ask for folks, even before that time, if their road's bad, we hear about it.
Yeah, I just didn't know, just like a suggestion box.
Yeah, 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 gotcha.
That's all it was, just, I, I assume that if somebody's having problems with their road, they're letting somebody know.
Yes.
But I just didn't know if there was a formal process.
Jim usually gives up, usually by December, right around there.
Right around there, and.
Status update.
And, and by then, but I've already had three people approach me about a certain road, so we'll have to evaluate it then, does, does that road go above other roads that Jim already hit? You know, and some of them move on that thing, because the road deteriorates a lot faster than a different road, I mean.
So that being said, if you get those calls, blast an email off to Jim to add them, so. I think with the addition of the, the Mass DOT piece that Keith had suggested, the goal is good, and it's a long-term goal. Any issues? All right, the human and elder, elder and human services needs. As we see the review, the needs assessment is due in September twenty fifteen to develop an implementation plan. So why don't we change, I'll make a suggestion, we have a couple of comments out here from Paul, develop a town-wide cross-generational activities. And Chuck, as, what does the increase improve COA human services, improve what, to what, by when, need assessment for both seniors and veterans?
May I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
We have that needs assessment coming up. And we defer this one until that needs assessment comes along?
I would, what, what I was going to suggest is, the, the actual goal was to get the needs assessment moving, and to explore some tax relief, which I think will be in the needs assessment. So why don't we take part of what you're, we're here, seeing over in Chuck's, review result of needs assess, oh, actually, it's spelled right out by Keith. Review, review the results of the assessment due in by the fifteen, and develop the implementation, okay? Just leave it as that?
And that's, that's kind of built in that we're going to revisit that within a few months.
Exactly, exactly, all right. All right, so the strategic plan for public safety, strategic plans for the fire and police. We really didn't receive anything, we got an update.
I didn't work it yet, still.
Yeah, so I mean, we haven't really completed this. We've had a little bit of input, we've heard some updates. The two comments that are down is move forward on the design build for fire station that I put in, within the, within the tax levy. And then Chuck said collaborate with the LPD to integrate the boys' home into the community, which.
That was just on the heels of what we've been talking about, just to keep it top of mind.
Great, 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 great comment.
Couple of things there, the five-year strategic plan, are we going to approve that?
I would say yes, we are going to approve it once we see it.
So if we approve it, then our goal becomes how do we help resource it?
When we approve it, I would say that would be part of the approval process.
So.
Implementation, yes.
So task, we've already tasked that, the, the police and fire to do it, so that's ongoing.
Yep.
So that verb can go away. Receive the two departments' strategic plan, incorporate it into the master plan, that's fine.
And develop implementation strategy, so that's.
Works for me.
Okay. So, so we've tasked them, they're working on it, we'll receive it, as PJ said, and then we will develop a implementation plan with the police and fire.
And your suggestion on how to fund the fire station?
Yep.
I would offer that's not a public safety issue, it's a fiscal issue.
I agree.
So, address it and wait till nine.
Just to throw in there, the key to that is within the levy.
We'll wait till we get to number nine.
All right, so, again, these, all right, so let's go, get back to the classification of the public safety strategic plans. Are we going to call that a long-term or a short-term goal? They should be able to get it done within the year, I'm thinking.
I would think a short-term goal.
Yeah, yeah, we saw, we should have.
If you have told them last year.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful, this, since we're giving month deadlines, I think this would be a good.
Yeah, so why don't we do, well, let's go January, after, the end of January?
I think when you, even though they're supporting it to the board of selectmen, coordinating with them rather than just assigning a suspense.
Well, we need to, we, you know, we need to give direction. The direction will be, we want to see it by here, that's what we're.
Oh, within the year, but to say, I want it by this month.
Okay.
Surely we have the authority to do that.
So, and let's not forget, that's an eighteen-month process, they would, they would have had to have a strategic.
Well, I don't disagree with how long it's taken, I'm just saying as a matter of business practice, if you will.
Yep.
Is, when we have the opportunity to coordinate. business practice, if you will, is, when we have the opportunity to coordinate with, even with subordinates, is, there's an opportunity for that discussion, because it's easy to issue an order, get it to me by their state. But I'm of the mind of, you know, put other things around their plate, and it's worthy, and it helps them also, I believe, see that's a more collaborative process.
I don't disagree, but I think there should be an end date.
I know, I'm not disagreeing with that.
And I don't think we need to ask them when that is. We should be, as, as the CEOs of this town, we assign them a task, let's give them a, 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 a target date to get that. Now, if that target date can't be met, it's their responsibility to come to this board and say, Board of Selectmen, you said December, here's what I need. I need X, Y, and C because of A, B, and C.
But then you've put them in a reactive position. I don't disagree, we have the authorities to do exactly what you propose.
Yep.
I fully believe we do.
Yep.
I think there's a better business practice is to engage with them and coordinate that, and then it's a buy-in versus a direction.
The goal's already out there.
But it's been out there for a year.
Yeah.
No, I don't disagree on that. But for this.
Anything else? I mean, I, I hear what you're saying.
I'd say throw something out there and let them know, like, you know, now let's talk, you know, but let's put something on the paper, would be my guess.
I don't know where you, where you're going with that. I mean.
We have the opportunity to discuss with a subordinate to this board when we'd like something from them. And we're gonna make a decision tonight to tell them when to do it. It's a much more collaborative process when we engage all the parties and come up with a joint date.
I, I have a suggestion that what you might wanna do is receive, pick a quarterly, semi-annual updates from the chiefs on progress with their strategic plan.
In a staff.
That way, I mean.
Collaborative establish.
Yeah, but I, I, I think still, we need, is this gonna be a long-term? Is it gonna take five years to get a five-year strategic plan?
Not disagree with anything you're saying. All I say is, to me personally.
Let me, then I would, I would make a suggestion and then put it to the rest of the board, and majority rules, I guess, do we want, yes or no, to have a target date for the completion of the five-year strategic plan? I guess that's what we'll say. Or, or, as PJ says, collaboratively work with them, and I'm not saying we're not gonna do that. I, I, I think we'll have the updates and, and bring them forward. I just think we need to tell them we, their expectation for a five-year plan is due here.
I think we can also create kind of a compromise by saying, we'd like to have it by.
No, I think the goal should be objective. If, if we're gonna make a decision that we wanna put a date, the date should be by this date.
I, I'm more inclined to give it a date, just because it's been out there for a year. And I don't think, I mean, certainly, I've spoken with both chiefs, and I think they've got their five-year plans pretty well thought out. So, I, I just think that it hasn't been delivered.
And I like the idea about the, the April, for, for this sitting board, I think this would be a good one for us all to, for that last meeting, you know, whether we do it in March, or January, or whatever. This is an objective that, you know, we should bring into closure before somebody, if someone doesn't decide to run, or someone gets beat, at least.
I would, I would look for a free, a late January date. That way, if, if we get the, the five-year plans in and we have some ideas of our own that we might wanna add on or make changes to before the board changes.
Well, then our goal is, we conclude the review by.
Perfect.
And then the onus is on us.
Review and approve, how's that sound?
And then, then it's fine at a meeting, or it doesn't even have to be a meeting. I think you'd have the authority through Keith to say, you, you guys have to be able to meet this, so when you, when you back up now, when you back up your schedule, for the Board of Selectmen to have reviewed by this particular date, you're gonna have to submit it by a certain date.
So, the, so the deadline's on us.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. That's fine. Review by the end of January, I like what Joe said.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
All right.
Review, review, and approve.
Review and approved. We're gonna approve it. Well, if we review it, we're either gonna deny it or.
Unless, unless, like Joe said, we make changes in the modifications, in which case we can keep it out.
So, it's incumbent upon them now to say, okay, Keith, I need to get in front of the board.
It's fairly standard when you set a deadline. I mean, we, when we commission new task force or study committees, you give them a deadline, and we, and when they need to, they come back and say, we would like a 30-day extension.
You can't bust a suspense if you don't have one. I'm with you.
All right. All right. So, you, did you get that one down?
Yep.
You're good? Okay. So, the town government org review, review update recommendation of the town government's study committee and determine the way, the way ahead. Organizational goals for the Board of Selectmen.
Because what, because what you did on that goal last year, I, I had submitted a report last August of what, looking back at the 2007 Town Government Study Committee, capital T E G, that there were a finite set of recommendations, you got an indication of what had been done, and I, I think we looked at it and said that there was no more to be done on, on, on those things. And, and my sense of what you're more focusing on now are more selectmen organization goals, how, how you do, you know, how you do goals, how you get input, how you review your own.
How you communicate, like, it was being mentioned two topics ago. I think that's where it fits in here. You can actually drop out the town government study committee now.
And put, and put selectmen, or, if you like, or, selectmen, or just organizational review. I don't know what you wanna call it. Yep. If you call it organization, I think town government organizational review was meant to reach back to that 2007 study.
Right, right.
If you're looking at just an organizational review, then that allows you to look at the way you operate, which, which was a number of things that were on your radar screen and.
So, so why don't, why don't we do that as the organizational review? And then we have the comments from Joe, PJ, and Chuck. And we have self-evaluation of the board, of our board, or outside evaluation. My opinion is to all the elected boards should do this about every 10 years, goal setting, find a technique towards some public input before our goal-setting hearing. Well, what is a public?
But what I was, in, in that part there, we talked about the goals, we get them all set, then we bring people in. I don't know what the technique is or how you do it, but is there a way that we could try to get some of their ideas ahead of time? So, when we're doing this right now, we already have some of the.
Sure. I think, I think it's.
Or maybe it's too hard to do.
No, it, well, it's very, it, it is, it's not too hard. That was actually the process that we used in Provincetown, and that the, and that we would invite all the boards and commissions to give their written input prior to a selectman's goal-setting meeting like tonight. And it would be a, it would be a stack this thick, because every committee and department would just love to tell you what to do, so, to give you the, the list. And ultimately, it was too overwhelming.
I think, I think, but, but, but what Joe's talking about is public input.
I, I hadn't even thought about the committees, and, and if I went by what you said, that would be, we wouldn't have time to read through all that.
I mean, every, and every committee, you know, that, that they just, you know, look, you know, were grateful and really look forward to the opportunity to tell you what to do.
And I'm sure 90% call for money.
For.
Sure. Yeah. So, so I think we run into this every year, since I've been on this board. The only way I believe we can do it is when the, the new board is set in May. And, and this can be determined somehow in a process of this organization, that we set aside agenda time, maybe two meetings before the new fiscal year, and say, you got two meetings public, we wanna hear what you think our goal should be for the following fiscal year. Something like that, you know what I mean?
You mean during a meeting?
During a meeting, you know, 'cause they, you know, the public's used to watching us on TV, A, on our specific regular meetings, and B, folks come to our regular meetings. If we can, you know, develop, I, I think, you know, it's a, maybe develop a government organization review, or develop organizational review, and, and, and put just bullet points in there, you know? How do we do that? And what is the, what is, what is the objective of, of the whole thing, you know? One being getting public input. PJ, yours.
Yeah, what I offered there.
Departmental achievements for each year, Board of Selectmen, meet all the paperless.
I don't know that it falls under this broad rubrics, you know, as far as town government organization review. But something we've done, other committees, is actually, you know, said, we will ensure we do this many times of this, you know, sort of activity to go to. And I think for the most part, we're probably doing it. You know, if you say one, yeah, we're definitely doing it. If you say 100, maybe we're not. So, there's a number in there that would make sense. But all it does is, it puts something very objective out there, that each of us will ensure, you know, we're going out into different activities within the town.
Yep.
Because, you know, each of us has different self-interests in, you know, how about tri- craft from time to time, we'll funnel sometimes towards those interests, and then it's a little bit outside that box, Steve, where we, which ones are the other ones that we go to that maybe we don't frequent all that often.
So, so that being said, why don't we, we hear public input is one bullet point under this, okay, to, to, to get the goals in regards to goal-setting. Why don't we say, and I think Joe, you had mentioned this a while ago to me in, in a conversation, why don't we, we, we don't, on an annual, on a semi-annual, have the department heads and just say, hey, what's up? Come in before us and just give us a review, you know, an evaluation of us, to say, hey, this is what we asked you for, here's what I got back, or, and tell us about the departments.
Which one are you attacking here?
I, I think it's gonna be part of the, the government organization, the, the organization.
No, whose recommendation?
Oh, I just picked that up off of your conversation you just had.
Oh, no.
The conversation you said, just had about setting, setting, like, like the example of the capital equipment. Hey, let's, let's set in, whether it's a review or input annually, by.
I'm sorry, I wasn't articulate enough here. What I mean by selectmen attend some X number of departmental achievement events each year, is when there's an award ceremony of sorts, that achievement is being done in particular, not whether the department has done their job and come in front of you. So, the police have, and, oh, let's see, what they have very recently, the open house, you know, that's one event. You know, the schools have honor night, you know, like a couple of weeks before graduation. The Council on Aging has something.
Don't we do that anyway?
Well, that's, I'm saying, we prob, I know we do, in some way, shape, or form. It just, it's very objective goal, and we say, we'd like to be able to at least this much each year. Your thoughts?
Yeah.
It's not a drop dead issue. Done it previously, and it was just something that was very objective.
All right. So, I, I guess, does that fit into the organization piece of this?
It doesn't fit under this goal rubric. I don't deny that.
Okay.
This was something, Keith picked the best place where we are right now to place it.
All right. So, so let's, we can come back to that, PJ, 'cause we got some other goals we're gonna go over. I think if we each pick a couple of goals that we listed that we wanna advocate for. So, getting back to the government organization review, or organization review, what do we call it? Organization review? Is that what you're?
Let's see, how about, yeah, organizational review.
Organizational review. One piece to say, how do we review ourself? What, what job do we do? There's nothing in place right now to do this for the Board of Selectmen. That's what you were getting at, correct, Joe?
And Joe even, Joe even said, even maybe an outside, an independent evaluation.
Basically, one of the things in the Town Government Study Committee was multitask, but one of the things was to evaluate this board. And that, that committee did, they went and talked to every single department, things like that. I think that's going too far, but there should be a way, if you have a third party come in and, and take a look at how we handle things and how we run, or do we have somebody internally, or can we take care of it ourselves? I don't know.
So, I think that can be part of the goal, is just that organizational review. What do we do for the Board of Selectmen? As, as a bullet point to the organizational review.
Identify how we can.
Yeah, determine.
Exactly. Self-evaluation, kinda get into that. This is your comments, Chuck. Self-evaluation report, report card process.
Yeah.
Communication plan. Now, that's a good one that, that kinda, you, you talked about that could fit in here. Let's have a bullet point as a communication plan. You said that earlier.
Right.
How does this board communicate to the public? You know, we, let's think about that and see if we can come up with some objectives to, to meet, to, to have better communication.
Mm-hmm.
School district collaboration, look at ways to work with the schools to make Littleton a better community, involve students in the process.
This kinda crosses over what PJ was talking about, cross-generationally, too.
Yep. Town meetings to engage students that are 18 through the collaboration, identify stronger buyer positions for resource. No, I'm good, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Help me out with this one, Chuck.
All right, which one? The collaboration in general?
Yeah, the collaboration.
So, the, let me just get the mock thing out of the way. I, I just, I think it'd be a great idea for, whether it's a chamber of commerce, the Rotary, or, or us, or someone to work with Bill Miss Guinness, Sue Harvey, there's some people at the high school that are very talented and very engaged with the kids when it comes to stuff that's even beyond what happens in the four walls. I'd love to see a mock town meeting to get these kids to understand what the heck it is, just so we can get better attendance. And we tried to do some stuff where we tried to get kids, we tried to, what was it called? I think Alex was on it, the, trying to get more people to come up.
Participation.
Participation, election, voter participation. But if we can engage kids and have them understand and debate, you know, you have a town meeting floor, mock town meeting floor, whether they go to the middle school the afternoon of our actual town meeting, and they debate the same issues that we're debating, or maybe they debate stuff that's going on at the school, just so they can understand the process.
Yep.
So, when they're 18 years old, they can.
Yeah, we had, we had it in the fifth grade in Provincetown, a mock town meeting, and they would, they, they elected a moderator, I mean, they.
Exactly.
So, they had mock selectmen and all that.
Who was mocking the selectmen?
And then, and then all the students, all the students, all the students would assemble and they would debate in town meeting style, whatever the particular matter was that they had selected.
So, so, you know, it's, it's, take it to the next level, and let's have some kids here with us.
I'd love it.
To shadow us.
Yeah.
You know, to run the meeting and.
Talk about outreach, community involvement, cross-generational.
So, I mean, that's, 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 that's.
Cause you're old and they're young.
Get that, get that from this into this, so we can get into the goal. What is it, what is it, how, and, and how can we put it in there to develop something? Develop.
Identify opportunities to.
Educational, develop educational opportunities for town-wide government, something, I don't know, help me out here. And this can be a short-term goal, 'cause once it's done, it's done, we can carry.
It's self-repetitive, yeah. I think there is, there's obviously gonna be a collaboration with the schools.
Town Government Day in the schools, how's that sound? Develop Town Government Day in the schools.
That's so cool.
Sure. Key something like that, or, I mean, having had it in Nantucket, what was?
Well, we call it, we called it a, we call it a mock town meeting, okay, just, but.
How about, how about identify opportunities?
Wouldn't you want the kids to be the town administrator for a day? Wouldn't you want the kids to be, kids to, to, to have, you know, get in, get out there? And I say that because in my other life in prisons, the.
Mark prisoners.
I thought it was, you don't wanna know.
Well, here's, here's what happens. The city of Gardner lets the kids come into the, to, to the facility and be the superintendent, exactly. And to be the deputies, and to be a director of security, to be a captain, and they get to run the, not run the facility, but, you know, get a flavor of what it's like to be in the prison. And that's how their outreach, their outreach is to that community.
We did that, not quite scared straight, but.
Do they have people shadow the inmates?
No. All right, that's called scared straight, and there's a lot of kids that, there's a lot of kids that go into Gardner, they go into Shirley, they go into Noah Fork, to listen about life in prison. But it's the same theory, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the kids absolutely love it, you know?
And there's, I mean, there's kids that I think would take.
Take to it.
Take, sure, take some interest in it.
Sure. I mean, what are the, what are some of the courses in the high school, government studies or anything like that?
Oh, that's, that's why I mentioned Bill Miss Guinness. He started the Model UN club.
Oh, cool.
You know, so he's going to Brown.
Well, we may have specific ideas of what might be good. If the goal is to collaborate with the school department, I would suggest that be our goal.
I think you're right. And then the specifics come out in the wash.
Yeah, is to collaborate, yeah, to, to.
Find opportunities to collaborate with the schools.
Yeah, find oper, yeah, yeah, find, okay.
All right. So, that, that.
Yeah, I love it.
Let's skip over my paperless suggestion.
Oh, geez, yeah, let's go back to the paperless.
Paperless is good, because recycling costs money. Paperless is good, because recycling costs money.
When you do it right.
We do it wrong.
When you do it right.
Single stream isn't good.
When you do it right, you make money.
It's awesome. I learned so much with you.
I know you do.
Yes, Keith.
If we go paperless, then we have nothing in front of me.
We'll bring you some paper. We'll go to Jordan's furniture and get you one of those mock laptops.
The question to that is, and I'm not opposed to it, I'm, I'm a big recycler, I started the recycling in town twenty years ago, working in the shack. The equipment, how do we get it? What are we gonna do with, you know, is it gonna be the responsibility of a board that puts a lot of time in for, for, for zero as far as?
I don't think you're negative, I think it costs money to be a selectman.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It sure does.
It costs money to be a selectman. So, so the question would be, the equipment, how we implement it, and I, I, you know, let's make it a goal, let's, let's put it apart, let's, let's review and see.
Yeah, I think if you had, develop and review a plan for becoming paperless.
A lot short-term, yep.
Then, then you don't have to, then you don't have to decide tonight that everyone's gonna get it like that, or whatever.
I'll even go along with that, okay. I have the stuff, I just don't bring it in.
I don't. I don't. I'm a computer person. We don't allow stuff like this in prison. I can't carry any of this stuff in prison.
But you can carry files.
Can you carry a sharp pen?
Sure you can, sure you can.
Yeah, but all this paper, some nasty papers.
We have computers inside the prisons, but we don't carry our, our stuff in. All right, so anyways, back to our goals, so that, that's, that's done.
Thank you.
All right. Review bylaws and regulations. This is, this is a really good goal, and I know we really didn't do much last year of this.
I put that in there.
Of any of the bylaws.
Yeah.
Jim. But, but it is coming up.
Before you move on to that.
I'm sorry.
The only thing I, communication comes up, again, throughout everything. Do we wanna do that as a separate goal? Do we wanna introduce it as part of the org, the org review?
I would say absolutely part of the.
Yeah, part, part of this, yeah, yeah. I've got, I.
You've got it in there?
I've got it in.
So is that, Keith, do you think I should bring up mine, or do you think that's different?
Introduction to Technology?
Yeah, exactly. I brought up a focus on technology and using it to improve communication with the town and within-town government boards, to improve our online presence and improve town employee efficiency where possible. So I just wanna see us have a, yeah, a better presence with technology, whether it's to the public or internally, nothing big or anything, but, you know, can we redo our websites? Can we use, you know, we ran into something about communication very recently with the Master Plan Updates Steering Committee, we wanted to send a note to certain boards or something, and it wasn't exactly easy, it was a bit of a manual effort, and I thought we could make this really automated, so you could say, I wanna know if I have a school committee, this one, this one, this one, it's real simple, you check, 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 and it goes, or, I don't know, I don't know the idea, but.
There are plenty, there are plenty of ways, and, and even to some of the concerns about how it's difficult to find information on.
The website, yeah.
On the town website. We put a ton of information there, and it's not, I mean, the only way I can find it is to use the search function.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't remember where I put it.
Yeah.
The, it's not illogical, or it's not intuitive to figure out where it might be. Search engine is a good one, and you can usually find it there. But we have the opportunity in, in the software for people to sign up for updates, but we don't send out updates.
Yep.
And if we linked the capability of what we have, I mean, I don't know what the tech, I, even for all the use that I make of our technology, and I put up an update after, on the evening, before I go home, of what we've just, what we've just done at our meetings, but there's another next step, if someone wanted to subscribe to my updates.
Exactly.
They should be able to do that, and there would, should be some easy way that I can just link it into that process. The technology, we have the technology, and we just need to figure out how to use it.
So can you, can you bring that into?
Or just follow me on Twitter.
A tighter, a tighter form, I don't, whatever.
Whatever floats your boat.
Yeah, so, so.
Little birdie told me.
Can you bring that into a tighter form, I guess?
Sure, sure, sure.
How about a plan for, how about, I, I'd suggest, plan for improving communication, including better use of technology.
I'd be happy with that.
Pretty broad.
Oh, but, yeah, I guess, yes, that falls under that. Yep, I'm good.
You okay?
Yes.
All right.
Happy. And I'd love to help with, however I can.
We all, we're gonna develop that plan so we can implement it.
Cool.
You, what game do you play? Oh, sorry.
Now I want you to confirm what's on my screen.
Is it Sim City?
He, no, it's my goals, and, but he's.
Oh, they have a new one, though.
I'm glad that he caught me right then, otherwise I might have been guilty.
Goal maker version.
All right, so review bylaws and regulations, proposed policies assigned, or public ways, oh, yeah, that's right. So, so this is a goal that we started probably five years ago, six years ago, somewhere around there, to at least, if we hear a hot topic out there, bring it forward to the board, let's, let's, let's look at some of the, the regulations, because the regulations and bylaws, they're immense, and they need updating, some haven't been updated for many, many years.
Yeah, so I'm sure, I'm sure probably dropped, but don't we have it in the calendar coming up that we're gonna be submitting?
Yeah, we've got, in, you did the annual review, and we identified four areas where you wanna have policies, and that we've tasked those out to four of you.
I, I know one of them, but.
We've got one.
Didn't you know what date that is?
We haven't set a date for it.
Because mine's only partly done.
We didn't set a date.
By partly done, you mean you haven't looked at it?
And, and there may be some, and there may be some town bylaw things coming up during the course of the year, I'm not quite sure yet, but.
So I guess this, this can be, continue as is, review town bylaw and regulations to identify those requiring updating or further alteration.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right?
Yep.
All right, so the fiscal strategic plan, again, I think we should adopt what we said for the PD and the FIRE. Fiscal is the same. Task finance team to develop a fiscal strategic plan, although we didn't say, we didn't put the years on it, should we do that? Including revising, updating financial policies, which we have done.
Yeah.
Continue to do.
And continue to do, that there was, despite that, the fact that there was a lot of work done by the, the Financial Policies Working Group to amend the, the policies, there still remains a lot that we need to do. I don't know if, I don't, it would be, you would be assigning, you know, we've got two members of that task force here, I think you'd be assigning the deadline to yourself, so.
I, I, I don't think, I'm not talking about the actual funding, I think we should break that out. I'm talking about the specific strategic plan. Is there a strategic plan right now for fiscal? You know, where are we gonna be in the next five years, you know?
Did we actually name a policy, the strategic plan?
Yeah, the financial management policy is what, is what we're calling it, but.
Or do we just scrap this and think of another one? I mean, this is a continuum, continuum?
I think this is, it has to be ongoing.
It is something to consider, because we did many plans, well, plans, revision, and maybe there's one, it just becomes an overarching, call it a strategy, and that each one of those plans should be contributing to, or each policy should contribute to that strat plan. I think it's there already in pieces, though.
Yep, yep.
So perhaps we could ask the Financial Policy Working Group is to somewhat coalesce that into a single document that, you know, is a couple, three pages long, if even that long, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe the way to attack that one.
I agree that all the component parts are there, because we, we have all of the long-range financial plan, we, the numbers are crunched, the numbers get re-crunched periodically, depending upon how we wanna alter the assumptions, but that, but to put it out in the form of a packaged document, fiscal plan, I know, I know what that looks like, I know Bonnie knows what it looks like, and that it would, if, if the task was to, to, to have that document be reviewed by you by a certain date that that, as we did with the other one.
So, so let's not call it a strategic plan, let's say a fiscal plan. And, you know, let's say.
Yeah, it's a long, a long-range fiscal, fiscal plan.
Right, right.
Yeah.
To re-, to be reviewed, or something that.
Yeah, and I think if we called it a long-range fiscal plan, that, that's also what we call the CPA long-range fiscal plan, which the, which I would suggest be part of this goal this year, where we committed that the selectmen, FinCon, and CPC would work together to, to develop a long-range fiscal plan, a long-range plan for the CPA funding, so I think that needs to be in here, too.
Okay.
So do we say jointly with FinCon?
Um, yeah.
It always does, yeah, jointly with FinCon, yeah.
Yeah, Chuck had a good way of maybe wording.
Uh, let's see, a different way to write, part of it would be collaborate and support the fin-, uh, financial committee, finance committee, actions to ensure the town's bonding rating remains at AAA.
And collaborate and support.
We wanna, we wanna include the fiscal team, too, the finance team, too.
Yeah.
Finance team and finance committee.
And that's one of the objectives in the financial plan, not written exactly that way, but the AAA rating is addressed.
Right.
Yeah.
And my point for the underwrite is, a lot of people don't know about it. A lot of people don't, they all know about overrides, not too many people know about an underwrite.
I mean, that's a good point about, even education on that, how do we prepare people for this conversation? It's gonna be difficult, you know?
Exactly, which Chuck wrote earlier, and I don't know, under what topic, but this is the exact same idea, educate people about how taxes go up and.
Oh, yeah.
People will approach me and say, why are taxes going up?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't add anything, but it'd be a good idea to show people, to show them with pensions and salaries and.
So, so, so why don't we do, why don't we make it a, a, a task on itself to.
It can be under communication.
Develop a, 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 a tax, tax handbook, annual tax handbook type of thing.
Education.
Citizens.
Kinda like we do with the warrant?
Yeah.
Where there's a summary.
Yeah, something like that.
So let's just, we don't have to think about it now.
Improve the public's understanding.
But let's think about what we wanna accomplish, you know, is it, is it a handbook? Is it an update? Is it a, I mean, we hold our tax hearing meetings, the public hearings, but like, as Joe says, I wanna see why the shift went, you know, why we shifted more to the residents and less to the business. Why did we do that? And what are the tax rates based on?
Actually, we increased both of them, we didn't reduce any.
Two and a half percent every year gets increased.
No, but the point about businesses and residential, it's.
We shifted over. We shifted from the residential to the, our last one, we shifted over.
But that's, that's, that's an argument for a different day.
It is, it is.
Because that's, there's an awful lot of strong points to be made why we should be fifty-fifty. I mean, if you wanna, well.
Well, and that's part of the education process. I think that's another tier of this whole, it's a multiple-layered beast.
Part of the educational part, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the more informed.
So what do you wanna call it? And what do you want?
I think it falls into communication. I mean, I think, under communication, one of the things that we do is we put together some sort of an education plan. Now, if that involves printing stuff, Jimmy, frankly, the state might have stuff, there's so much stuff that you can get from the state that's already printed.
So that'll go under the organizational review, is that, under the subset of communication?
Communication.
Yep, that would, that would be a good place to put it.
Developed.
And it is there, if you wanted to know, if seriously you wanted to know about override on the ride, you go on to mass.gov, and it is there.
But people want to, want us to explain to them why their taxes are going up?
Relative to little.
It's about Littleton, right.
That we should be able to.
Exactly.
So maybe the goal is not to educate the community, it's to educate ourselves.
Well, I think in the process, we do educate ourselves.
Yeah, exactly.
The more you talk about.
But if we're not able to articulate it right now, that's the bad on us.
Sure.
I, I think it's more about kind of ma-, mass education.
To include everybody.
We can only talk to so many people, probably.
All right, so, so, so that, we'll get into this discussion as to how it gets done when we start the, the goals themselves. All right, so now let's go, are we all set with the matrix itself? Any, any questions? Are we good with that? So, any new goals?
Who are we going next?
New goals, what do we wanna add?
Okay, where do we hide those?
You only find them in the last piece.
I kinda marked them off, if you want me to. The first one was under one, under Chuck's second bullet, establish a plan for acceptable growth.
Just show me the source document that we're looking at, please.
It's in, it's in here, it's in the matrix, everything's in the matrix.
Everything's in the matrix that was sent in.
Every time we said, that's a potential, I circled it.
Everything that you submitted on your sheets is, is in the matrix somewhere.
Okay, fair enough, because, see, we were discussing, no one says we were going along.
Yeah, exactly, we flagged them, it's a, yeah.
All right, so is there anything else that anybody else?
I just wanna add something, and I don't, I don't know where to put it, maybe it goes under marketing of the town, but the town offers, this town offers something in the area of fine arts that most other towns do not, mostly our, our size. When you think of it, we have Indian Hill Arts, we have Natchoba Corral, we have Cannon Theater. We now have 529 King Street, and it has all this artist things.
Cultural.
Cultural.
Yeah, it's a cultural economy.
Firehouse Cafe, so we had, it's just to, my thing is support and encourage the cultural fine arts, to make people aware of it, because we do offer something to this town that most other towns.
I would suggest where we list geographic areas, Littleton Common, the Point Crossroads, blah, 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 that we also add our cultural economy.
Inventory.
As one of, that's the, the jargon for it, and, and there's a lot that, that communities can do to, to promote their, their cultural economy. And we haven't really set, we haven't, it hasn't bubbled up to a goal, but I think if we list it along with the geographic areas, while it may be disparate, that, that the cultural economy, I think, is an identifiable group, so. Plus Littleton's cultural economy.
Anything else, folks, that?
That, to me.
Jump over to.
I think we found a spot for all the rest of them. Yeah, I think that was the only one we didn't put anywhere, from Chuck.
No, the only, the other thing I had was green initiatives, but Keith rolled it into No, the only, the other thing I had was green initiatives, but Keith rolled it into the 2016 potential goals under the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Now we address the ones that I submitted.
Did you?
So.
Paperless?
So, so what I'll do, I've got my draft, what I've done, I will send that out, you can, after the meeting, you can review it to make sure it says the way you want to say it, and then we'll post a notice after I, in the newspaper for an agreeable date, that, where those goals read the way you want them to, so.
Do we have, what's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is the, is the 27th.
Oh, okay.
And actually, wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad night to do it, if you want to, Joe, only because looking ahead, I see we're August 10th, when you reconvene, Cooper Farm is going to be very busy. You could do it later in August 10th, but I just don't know how we're going to, what shape we're going to be in after a couple of hours.
Right.
On Cooper Farm, if, I don't know if you can do justice to it. I don't, I don't think you'd want to push it off to October, I mean, August 24th, because then we're a month and a half out, and I think we could probably do it in July. I think we could do it at our next meeting in July.
Let's, let's, let's agenda it for the 27th, and get the feedback to Keith by the end of next Wednesday, Thursday?
Well, we'll put it, we'll need to put it in the paper Friday, this Friday. The notice goes to the newspaper this Friday in order to get it in next Thursday.
For the, for the actual public hearing?
Yeah, so, so I'll send out tonight, and I'll, and it'll be out there, you know, as a draft for, for review, yeah, I'll post it tonight, but.
Do you want to look at those new policies that same night?
Sure.
Get them out, Jim.
Now I have to write them all.
Well, you can, all you, you only, you only need to do what you're ready to do. If you've got one ready to do, we can just, you know, we don't have to be under deadline pressure, so.
And I'm kind of wait to see.
Mine's most procedural.
I'm kind of wait to see what the state's going to do with their public records law, because they're, right now, in the process of debating and updating their public records law.
Did that last year, did we, the year before?
Yeah, well, you know, I think the Attorney General's hot on it right now.
She doesn't write the legislation.
I know. Let's, let's see where they go.
In fact, I think her job is she executes the law.
Well, she's hot, she's pushing, to get the legislative, legislation to move.
It'd be good to see.
So.
No.
So that being said, you may not see mine on the 27th.
Yeah, cynicism aside, it'd be good to see.
So I'd say the 27th, that 7:30.
Sure.
And then there's a motion you can adopt to, to do that.
Any other further discussion on the, the goals, the, the goal-setting process we just went through?
I got it.
And I would look for a motion.